The reason I keep posting these videos about 5G and the city council meetings that I've been going to and all this stuff is, of course, to encourage other people like yourself to engage in this conversation with your local community and your local government, but also to just share what we're doing in hopes that it might help you and what you're trying to accomplish in your area. You know, this is still pretty early in the opposition to 5G, relatively speaking. We have a lot of opposition globally, but where we really need to make a difference, I think, is locally, and that's where we can make a difference. So I encourage you to get engaged with your community and start finding out what's going on. What they're doing is they're installing these so-called small cell transmitters or small cell antennas, small cell towers, which are basically mounted on power poles. They're also putting them on light posts. They're finding various ways of hiding them in the, in the light posts, so they, they actually have the electronics now are coming mounted, like, inside the pole itself to hide the aesthetics of these transmitters. And that's because a lot of the opposition has been aesthetic. So the FCC seems to think they can go by this rule that disallows any health concerns from the citing in the local administrations, and therefore, any opposition that has to do with health concerns is just, like, pushed aside. And there's question about that, and the constitutionality of that seems very unfounded. But they're still doing that, and that's why they're trying to hide the components of these small cell antennas within the light post itself. And at this point, 5G has only been turned on in a few select cities in the U.S. and a number in Europe as well, from what I've read, a bunch in China as well. But there's still a lot that they're trying to do in terms of installing these small cells in the meantime, while people aren't paying attention. And that's why this opposition is really important, because we need to oppose it now, because they're putting in these small cells that are not actually, supposedly not actually transmitting the millimeter waves of 5G, but they're capable of it. And then all they have to do is submit a new application for the existing, already-installed small cell antenna to, in order to upgrade it to 5G. So that's what's going on. They're installing just thousands and tens and hundreds of thousands of these small cell antennas all over the country in the U.S. with plans of turning them on in the future. In Eugene, Oregon, where I am, supposedly, they do need to submit another application in order to turn on that 5G capability. But once the tower is already there, and it's, like, sitting right outside your house, then, and then they turn it on, it's, it's, it's basically, it's gonna be an easy step for them to turn on the 5G and get those applications in. So that's why we're so concerned and pushing hard to prevent any adoption and any new towers from, from being built, because a lot of times, they're just building them right in front of homes, you know, literally 20 feet from someone's bed, not warning the person that lives in the house at all. There's no process for debating the viability of the application for the permitting process or any, any of that. That's the problem. That's the biggest problem. I'm going to put in a number of the recent city council meetings that we've had here, so you can see what's going on here for whatever it's worth. Before I get to that, though, give you a word from a couple sponsors. Now, Health Harmonic is my web store. You can check out all the products that we have there, and, you know, you might have noticed I've been promoting the energetic bracelets like this one, and I encourage you to check those out on the, on the website. They are awesome. But I also wanted to show you a new thing here. This is not on the website, but this is actually a protective underwear, which is made with a silver, a silver threaded material to block EMF and radiation from the crotch of, of, these are specifically for men. So I encourage you to check these out. You can go to GetLams.com and use the discount code HARMONIC. Get a nice discount on your protective underwear. And for anyone that's using a phone or lives anywhere, really, I mean, this is really for any man that is concerned about radiation, and you should be, because this is, it's proven to be affecting birth rates in a lot of countries, and it's, it's just data as far as, at this point, we'll see when, when more data comes in to, to prove all the, all these, these data points that we're seeing and lowered birth rates and all this kind of stuff.
Thank you. First, I want to know where are the two places that were denied?
Where are they? Both, both were in alley locations, and they were, I'm not exactly sure of the street address, but they were denied because they were in alleys that were behind, and we have a preference for being out on the streets.
So you want them more visible?
We want them to be out in the streets where, where more visually, so our, our ability, they will be more visible, they will blend into overhead structures more in a, in a busier street. That's the basis of the street classification preferences we have.
So neighborhood streets are okay?
No, neighborhood streets are our least preferred.
Oh, well, the one that was called to my attention is under neighborhood street, is very clearly obvious, obviously visible, is just a few feet from a front door and is on an extra pole, which is ugly. So I, that's not a question, it's a comment, I don't understand it, but I wonder why we didn't discuss the aesthetic limitations before we started permitting the devices?
So the aesthetic limitations have, have been evolved with the program when, in the most recent FCC ruling, they, they limited our ability to regulate based on aesthetic preferences. So there is some, there, that is, some of that is new, and our, as I mentioned, our program has evolved as, as the, as the technology continues to be deployed.
But council hasn't discussed changing the aesthetic or having new aesthetic requirements for the new technology and the new devices, and seems that that should have happened. Also, I don't think the public has had a chance to discuss that. I understand that we can't consider, currently, we can't consider health benefits or health problems, if there are such things, but we can consider aesthetics, and we have not discussed it. Also, when you talk about the owner, I assume you're talking about E-Web or the city, not the property owner?
That is correct.
And the property owners, why, why aren't they notified? They're not only consulted as to whether they want one in front of their house, but they're not even notified until they see someone there working. And this, one that was called to my attention was just, the person didn't know what was happening. There are big trucks there in front of the house, and, and it's very close to the front door. So it seems that that's something, was this considered that we should consider the preferences of people who live there?
You're looking at me? Yeah, well, it's, I think it's more of a legal concern.
So what would happen if we drafted an ordinance and approved an ordinance that would basically create a prohibition for locating these in residential areas? So we'd basically take on the federal government?
Fifth-generation millimeter wave frequencies are not, do not exist in our community right now on these installations, no.
If someone were to do that, they would, then you said, have to apply for a new permit, and so if there was new equipment that needed to be put on, they'd have to go through that whole process again?
Yes, so the change in equipment and the change in radio frequency would require a new permit and a new radio frequency report by an engineer.
So no one has 5G outside their house?
No.
Okay, excellent.
No, I want to just say one thing there, to clarify, because one thing that's been really confusing is if you have cable and you do wireless inside your own house, in some places, it's coming up as 5G, and it stands for 5 gigahertz, which is very different than the 5G that we're talking about here. And so even in my house, when I installed a new modem, it gave me the choice for, inside of my Comcast thing, regular or 5G, and I was like, ah, I thought we didn't have 5G. And so I had to go research that and make sure that that's what was happening. So I think it is providing some confusion. I just wanted to share that.
People are using this, and what are they doing with this wonderful technology?
Well, it, so the small cell installations now are, are designed to fill gaps in service. So that's gaps in service that the macro cell towers aren't, aren't providing. So that's, that's the primary focus of the providers now, is to fill in those gaps in service.
Well, I just want to speak to the frustration and fear of the large crowd that's here in your binder, which shows what we've been receiving. If there's not gonna be a report until 2021, is it a possibility they'll get turned on before then? Is there any timeline of when they might be functional?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't, we don't know.
So tomorrow, 10 years, we don't have any idea. And I know people get worried about new technology, and so far, even though I stand in front of the microwave and long ago thought it would make me sterile, it didn't. And, you know, okay, maybe steam engines are fine, but I don't know, why does, there's so much cancer? Is it, you know, we have a lot of electricity, and I just wonder why we have more cancer? So I have to put some, you know, listening to these people who are very worried, and I, I have friends who are affected by it. I have friends who can't wear watches because they stop. They're really sensitive to these things. So I understand the, the legal, you know, problems, but I also understand this really big fear, and there's a lot of information that backs it up in, in some ways. And so I'm, I'm frustrated with how to respond to this really big concern, and where's it gonna go from here, since we don't seem to be able to do anything? You know, this is Eugene. Are people gonna start tying themselves to phone poles? I'm worried.
First, I have a comment. The fact that there are already ugly things does not mean that it's okay to do more ugly. I know the transformers are ugly, but it's like saying, somebody did this bad thing, therefore, I could do another bad thing, which is something children might say sometimes. So I have questions, a couple of questions. If, well, for one thing, we do already have some aesthetic standards, and I think it's easy to see that something right in front of, you can't look at your house without seeing it, a few feet from your front door, is aesthetically displeasing. Is it possible to have a device removed if it's aesthetically really bad? That's a question. Once it's there, can it be, can the person complain and have it removed?
There's, right now, they, they've been issued a permit, so there isn't, I don't believe, a process for the revocation that would be based on third party coming in saying they don't like it or what.
The only, the only route I can see to that is if there is a change to the equipment. So if, if the provider was to come back with a change to the equipment and have to re-permit the site, then that would be the opportunity to reconsider the aesthetics of that site.
But a person can't say they made a mistake. This is really unsightly, and it's ruining the value of my house. That doesn't mean that they can have it removed. Okay, then I, oh, that's too bad. And could we make a requirement that these devices be a certain distance from a house?
Yes, that, I mean, there are, I mean, yes, within the confines of, that doesn't materially inhibit the provision of the service. So you can have separation requirements between facilities, so long as they can still provide the service, and we're not, you can have setback requirements from homes, you can have, you can have all of those things to create less kind of visual blight within areas, again, under that whole umbrella of, so long as it is staying consistent with federal law, which is, it doesn't prohibit the service, which means, is it materially inhibiting the service?
But it couldn't be retroactive?
No.
I'm asking.
No.
Doesn't seem right. I know that we, there isn't much that we can do, but I would like to know what we can do and have the opportunity to consider doing the things that we can do at this point. And that's what I was hoping, what I was hoping for with this session, really.
Mayor, Council, Ethan Nelson, here at Governmental Affairs. Yeah, there's two bills. HR 530 is in the House side and is working, and both, and then there's a Senate bill, Senate 2021, which is by Senator Feinstein, and that one's moving through prognosis. It's probably not within this, this Congress that those, that either of those will kind of go through, but they are only specifically saying the FCC overstepped their authority and would support us on the litigation that we have. It has, they've not done anything related to the health and safety concerns related to 5G.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
And I'm here today because I came home from a two-day vacation, and I found all these trucks in front of my house at 21st and Lawrence, and they were putting up a pole, which I never was notified about, for a 5G meter. And I'm really upset about it and devastated about health issues, about the value of my home and my neighbors and the children. I mean, it's right across from Washington Park, where there's a nursery school, Splash Park, kids' sports, and a number of other things. And I feel really outraged that I wasn't notified at all. I didn't know this was happening. I know, I've been reading about 5G and that, how there's not been enough research done, and some of the research that has been done is very negative about health issues. And, you know, I feel, I kind of feel just kind of outraged that I wasn't notified by the city that this was happening in my community. And I know there's another one that I was told on Washington and 26th Street, and I own a house, a rental house on Friendly, which is not very far from there, and I have a young woman who's six months pregnant, and I think, oh, great, you know, this might affect her and her child. And I wonder, you know, where are all these happening? I'm wondering if, you know, are they happening by your house? How do you feel? You know, are you being notified about these things? And I think it's, it's just not fair that we're not notified, or, and that there, it's happening without our input, and I really don't want it. And that's, that's my, I'll give somebody else another minute. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Today, October 14th, there is an installation going on, a 5G pole at the corner of 24th and Washington, at Washington Park. The site was visited by members of families for Safe Technology. MasTech will come and, on another day, and install the antenna and the big brown box. I was out there talking to the workers today. There was no public notice, as required by your ordinance 20083. Under policies in your ordinance 7.302I, requirements for public notice. Why are you not notifying the public? That is a violation of your ordinance, and you can be held liable for that. Number two, under policies, policy number four in your ordinance, telecommunications facilities must be located, installed, and maintained in a manner that minimizes visual impact and preserves the views. The city is placing this 5G pole right in front of a homeowner's living room window. This is not preserving their view. Instead of looking out to the beautiful Washington Park, they will view the ugly, monstrous pole, antenna, and big brown box. That's their view. Number three, under policies in the ordinance, number three, the public must be protected from adverse safety consequences stemming from the installation, maintenance, and operation of telecommunications facilities. In the city, 5G, 4G has not been safety tested, nor has it proven safe. So the people, children, babies, and pregnant mothers will be subjected to the safety consequences of the operation of this device. Installation of the brown cabinet box on the pole has a notice, and that notice says radiation, symbol on it, warning of, here's the warning, it's in quotes, "Beyond this point, you are entering an area where radio frequency fields may be exceeded, may exceed the FCC general population exposure limits." According to your ordinance 2083, the city prefers not to put 5G poles in residential areas. Well, then, why are you doing it? Why the hell are you doing it? The city prefers not to. It's, you're doing it all over the city. This is not an isolated installation. It is happening all over Eugene. Number five, section 7.302, section seven, that the matters contained herein contain the public health, welfare, and safety. Where is the concern for the public health, welfare, and safety here? When you put these devices up in...
Thank you. Oh.
Section 5, 7 dot 303, section number seven, that the matters contained herein concern the public health, welfare, and safety. Where is the concern for public health, safety, and welfare? When you put these devices up in residential neighborhoods, literally feet from our homes, and right at the corner of Washington Park, Washington and 26th, right in front of Anna, who spoke earlier, of her living room window, there's no concern for safety here. 5G has not been safely tested or proven safe. You are violating your own ordinance of April 28th, 1997. You can go on our website, just go under Home and see all the dangers of 4G, 5G, wireless, it's, it's all up there under the Home tab, FamiliesForSafeTechnology.org. It is time for a new urgent ordinance based on aesthetics and utmost concern for the public safety, welfare, and health. This is allowed by the FCC. Look at Sonoma, California's great urgent ordinance in effect for one year now. It's an emergency moratorium. This pole installation at 21st and Lawrence has to be stopped immediately, as it is in violation of your outdated ordinance. This is a demand. Families for Safe Technology.
First, in response to the 5G work session from last Wednesday, in that discussion, it was mentioned that sometime in 2018, the first small cell transmitter was installed in Eugene. I just want to put it on record that that is a complete incorrect statement. Small cell tel, small cell technology dates back at least a decade. It's this new 5G type of small cells that are starting to be installed in Eugene. And it's important for you guys to understand the differences in technology, how these new small cells are favored by industry. There is a small cell transmitter, for example, on 29th, right near Amazon Park. It's been there for many, many years, same as all the other cell towers, but it's in a residential area. It's on a power pole, just like these newer small cell technologies are being, are being proposed and installed recklessly, without concern for health and safety. And, and then as far as recent news, San Francisco has been battling and winning for local control, starting back in April, but continuing, April 4th, 2019, California court challenged FCC's Telecommunications Act of 1996, which states that phone companies cannot install equipment that may, quote, "incommode the public use of the road." State Supreme Court unanimously agreed that telecom companies have to abide by SF 2011 ordinance, which requires a permit for cell tower placement. This is T-Mobile West LLC versus City and County of San Francisco. California Supreme Court decision, First Appellate District, Division 5. And then further on, court states a city can require conditional use permits based on aesthetics. And aesthetics is not just visual aesthetics. This is much more. This discussion went on in your discussion the other day. This is much more than just visual aesthetics. Mobile West LLC versus City, City of San, City and County of San Francisco, decided September 15th, 2019. The court stated, quote, "In general, courts are cautious in applying the doctrine of implied preemption in view of the long tradition of local regulation and legislatively imposed duty to preserve and protect public health. Preemption may not be lightly found. Where a local legislation clearly serves local purposes, state legislation that appears to be in conflict actually serves different statewide purposes. Preemption will not be found."
Thank you.
Hello, Council. Thank you for entertaining us today. I want to thank you for having a work session, the work session that you had on the 5G issue earlier, I guess it was last week. I think that, as with any issue, there needs to be follow-up to that work session. Can't get anything done with one 45-minute discussion. It seemed like there are enough interest in asking staff to come back with some drafts of what an ordinance might look like, what you might be able to regulate, and I would urge you to please consider asking staff to come back with some draft options for you to consider. For example, you talked about staff, public work staff talked about looking for alternative locations, and they talked about a 500-foot radius from a proposed site and looking within that 500 feet to see if there was an alternative. In the, in the case of, of the pole in front of my house, it's less than 500 feet from a commercial arterial, that being 30th Avenue, and so instead of it being sited on a partially dead-end street, being East 29th Place, could have been sited a block away, less than 500 feet, on a major commercial arterial that doesn't have any dwellings, any homes on it. And that's what I would have liked to see. The other issue I'd like to bring up is that we don't know where any of these are going, and, and when we've asked if the city knows, and when we've asked if E-Web knows, we're told no, or if they do know, they're not telling us. And I would urge you to use your authority and your, to, to require that you know where these proposed sites and these build-outs would be. I mean, you've not, the city has known about this since 2014, and for us to find out about it, when it comes up in front of our house, in the case of the two, a woman earlier and then myself in 2019, it just doesn't seem like the way this city normally operates. And I would urge you to, that, that you can do better on that. We can find out and let people know. Thank you.
I also attended the 5G work session on the 9th, and I wanted to thank those counselors that did ask questions about making a more restrictive ordinance to protect the health, safety, and property of the citizens of Eugene. And when, when the counselors did ask the questions, we noticed that the city attorney and the public works were discouraging of the participation of the council, and so as not to interfere with their system that they have going for permitting, et cetera, these small cells, which is not protecting the... the public, nor is it going about this in any sort of aesthetic way. We need the council to be strong. We need you to be strong on this and work to create an ordinance that truly considers the public, not allowing 5G in residential neighborhoods, and the other seven points that Families for Safe Technology emailed you, which came straight out of the ordinances of Sonoma, Monterey, and Burlington. They're, they're all, all these ordinances have been in effect for a year, and they're meeting the FCC 332 7A code requirements. And Sarah Mederi opened the work session noting that there would be no discussion of the science related to the health effects on this technology. So that wasn't addressed at all. And you really need to get deep into that, you know, for your decision-making process. So that requires another, another work session, and never, another several work sessions to get into, to the science and to get into the details of an aesthetic urgency ordinance, which is much needed. When will you hold the next work session, dear counsel? When will you hold the session? It'd be most responsible to put a halt to the build-out of the infrastructure while you are working on the details of the new ordinance. We need you to take the reins on this. We need you to be strong. We need you to represent us, the citizens, and not the city staff representing the telecoms or whoever it is that they are. So thank you for being strong. Thank you for your questions, counsel. Stay the course.
You can ban small cell towers today, based on two categories that are not regulated by the FCC, and that is privacy and security. I'm going to read an article written by a professor and dean of the College of Engineering and Computing Science, Computer Sciences at New York Institute of Technology. 5G will also unleash new security risks. Hyper-connectivity will give cyber criminals and hostile foreign countries more opportunities to hack our devices and networks, imperiling our wealth and our lives. It's crucial that regulators, companies, and consumers start shoring up their defenses fast. The spread of 5G will accelerate the Internet of Things, devices such as thermostats, fitness monitors, refrigerators, alarm clocks, light bulbs, and even dog collars that connect to the web. This enhanced connectivity will make daily routines more efficient and convenient, but it'll also open the floodgates for cyber criminality. Imagine the opportunities criminals will enjoy, once every electronic device is 5G capable. Burglars could hack smart thermostats, which learn then families, when families leave their homes, to discover when the house may be empty. Predators could hack 5G-connected security cameras to peek into children's rooms. Criminals have already hacked 4G devices. In 2016, the infamous Miari botnet took control of 300,000 Internet-connected devices to launch a massive denial-of-service attack that knocked out Internet connections for most of the eastern seaboard. Imagine these same actors obtaining control of 5G remote-controlled surgery machines, delivery drones, or automated cars. The possibilities are endless. A hiker who uses her 5G smartwatch to share a geo-located Instagram post of her morning trek could inadvertently allow strangers to track her movements.
Okay. I was really mad when I got here, but I'm, it's been a long night, so I'll probably be easier on you than I was gonna be. Rob in Bloom Garden, I'm in Claire's Ward. Eugene has a democracy problem. I'm sorry, I don't know your name, Ms. City Attorney, other than City Attorney is what it says there. But in every discussion about the 5G question, I watch you continuously invoke federal law as the ultimate arbiter, instead of taking a stand yourselves, or with other cities banding together to put up a fuss about this whole damn thing. Meanwhile, you and city council, all of you, are raking in tax money while at the same time regulating marijuana businesses, which you may recall are illegal at the federal level. Hello? This behavior is a major contradiction. Do any of you see this, really? Especially if you won't even be proactive about the possible dangers of 5G technology while promoting pot use all over town. We, we know you already sent the letter to the FCC. Now you can just sit back and take no authority over the lives of your citizenry? Until it's too late, maybe? That letter is really only about protecting your income from selling pole installations and rights to the telecoms. That's the whole damn letter. You obviously have some motives for doing one and not the other. And I hope it's not that you're all afraid to stand up to power, because we have a serious democracy problem here, people. Thank you.
Well, I wanted to talk about climate and also about 5G, and, and give the council a few resources you may not be aware of. With respect to 5G, I would like to see the council do a ban in residential areas, maybe a six- or one-year rolling ban. And I say that I have bad EMF sensitivities myself, and people, this technology, yes, they, we can't say what 5G is going to do because it hasn't been measured yet, but we know what 4G does. And the resources are, there's a book called Overpowered, which is available at the Eugene Library by Dr. Martin Blank. And that covers the 2,500 studies that were done when he wrote the book in 2014. He's one of the leading experts in the world. He's, he's passed on, he was in his 80s. But that's an outstanding book. And just the graphs in it, like comparing it to cigarettes, they were known carcinogen, but they didn't, it didn't, the warnings didn't come, and the bans didn't come for 25 years later. It's the same with Agent Orange. He had a list of 20 different things. The death rate in the United States has gone up the last four years. Okay, sorry. We've lost, we've lost eight months of lifespan as Americans. We've gone from 80.5 years life expectancy to 79 point, you know, 10 months. And since that, we're starting to go over. We could start losing two or three months a year in life expectancy with 5G. So the Clinton administration FCC Act of 1996, it was an overreach. The FCC shouldn't be deciding health issues for all of us. So that, it's, I, I would like, I'd like to see the city council and the mayor receive a raise. You guys are under a lot of heat. I was shocked to hear how little you're earning. I would suggest, I think, maybe $40,000 a year for the counselors and $80,000 a year for the mayor. You guys could pass that, you know, effective at the next election, and I encourage you to do that. So I wanted to talk also about climate. And my background, I'm a retired professional photographer. You can see my work at Getty Images under Michael Townsend, if you put in bungee jumping, and then you click on that image, and my other images come up. But I'm one of the most published photographers living in Oregon, even though I don't have a website, because I have chronic headaches, so I've just, you know, I'm just kind of taking it easy. But look at the book Franken Skies, and the movie, there's a movie called Franken Skies, and then the website, Geoengineering Watch. Please add the word "geoengineering" to your climate. It's not CO2, it's also geoengineering, it's man-made changes.
Thank you for, thank you for watching this video. Please go ahead and share it with someone you care about, and subscribe to my channel, if you haven't done that already. And check out the website, HealthHarmonic.com. Look forward to seeing you on the site. Let me know if you have any questions. Thanks again for watching.